Third two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I'd like to get a roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Welker?
Here.
Commissioner Penn?
Here.
Commissioner Switzer?
Here.
Commissioner Somerville?
Here.
Commissioner Meders? Absent. Commissioners Zamudio?
Present.
Vice Chair Paziac?
Here.
Chairman Merritt?
Here, thank you. Okay, so we have one person absent, but we have the stand-in individual here. Mr. Zamudio, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go to item C, the consent calendar. Is there any questions with the consent calendar? Anybody have any problem with moving forward with that? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that consent agenda be approved.
Second.
We have a sit motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion is carried, okay. So we're gonna move forward to item D one. ZC twenty-two zero-two, this is a request by Gary Zito on behalf of Arizona Heritage Construction for approval of a rezoning of approximately three point oh four acres from industrial to single-family residential, one acre minimum. SR one for a property located at East Granite Creek Lane. Ethan?
Alrighty, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, um, and Commissioners. Beth and Hank Planner with the town tonight, the item before you is a request for a rezone for a residential property on Granite Creek Lane. The applicant is in attendance tonight. So the roughly three-acre subject property is located to the north of Granite Creek Lane. To the north of the property is El Charro Norte on Arizona Trail. Currently, the subject property is vacant. The request is to rezone the property from its current zoning of industrial to single-family residential, one acre minimum. As you can see, the surrounding area is mostly single-family residential, one acre minimum to the west of the property, and industrial zone to the east of the property.
Why don't we hold you up for one minute, let's all turn our cell phones off, I don't know if that was a cellphone, but that's a good reminder. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Alrighty, the rezone to single-family residential, one acre minimum will be in conformance with the general land use map, which designates this property and this area for commercial multifamily residential, oh, sorry, excuse me, uh, medium-density residential, two acres or less. The town notified the surrounding neighbors of the neighborhood meeting, um, and it was held on March twenty-third, and no community members were in attendance. However, staff did receive one email in opposition to the rezone. Now with that, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the town council, a recommendation of approval for the rezoning of approximately three point oh four acres from industrial to single-family residential, one acre minimum, for property located at East Granite Creek Lane, with the conditions of approval found in attachment A. At this time, I will open the floor for any questions or discussion.
Anybody here have any questions?
Just other than, does staff get any follow-up on that email, or?
Um, I'll have our senior planner answer that question.
Um, in reference to the email, you're speaking of Mr. Wells' email on behalf of his property. We did have a discussion with the town attorney regarding this, and we believe this to not fall within that prop. He quoted three oh seven, but Proposition two oh seven.
Just for a note, it's in the packet?
Correct.
Oh, it is, to follow up. Neither did I.
Yeah, it's, um, it's under attachment F. Any other questions? Thank you, we may call you back up again.
Alright.
Um, would the applicant like to step forward and explain what's going on?
And my name is Jody, not Gary.
Oh.
Gary was my brother who brought it in, but.
Okay.
What we're gonna do is, uh, three single-family residential homes right there that are pretty much, uh, in compliance with everything else that's already out there. Kind of basic and simple.
What kind of homes are you gonna put out there?
They'll be site-built.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so now we're gonna open up this portion of the meeting for the public to comment on this item only at this point. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Did you originally say that it was the two acres?
You need to go to the microphone, ma'am.
Yeah, step up and state your name and then ask the question.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
It's alright.
Julie Tarpley.
Keep me in line.
And did they originally say it was?
What was your name, ma'am?
Julie Tarpley.
Okay. So your question is, how many lots is it gonna be, um, turned into?
No, wasn't it originally zoned for two acre minimums?
It's actually, is, right now, zoned for industrial.
Okay.
It's alright to answer that quickly, I suppose. Alright, thank you. Would anybody else like to step up and speak? Please state your name.
Dan Main, former chairman, former mayor. Had your job for eight years.
Is it possible to get the map up that shows the property again? Will, can we do the property real quick?
Could you raise your mic, sir? Thank you.
Okay, you see the yellow line diagonally, that's the railroad track out there? All that land along from the left to hit, from the rezoning property to the other one, is floodway. No one's gonna ever build in it, you can't build in the floodways, it's not even floodplain, it's floodways, flows. So Mr. Wells' property along there, never gonna be able to be built on. It may address what, any issues that comes up with there because it's in floodway. You can build in floodplains, but you can't build in the floodway, which is an actual flow. That's where we're sitting right now. And it's just gonna be cows out there forever.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, everybody, uh, my name is John Kazicki, and I work closely with Mr. Kurt Wells. And, uh, we're gonna object to this rezone. Uh, this is in an area that's been zoned industrial for decades. And first of all, Mr. Main, uh, claiming that that property cannot be built on is totally incorrect. And if you look at the Road Four project, Road Four South, that is in even, even in a bigger part of the wash. So, it, this property can be built on, there's nothing to matter with it. So, uh, I don't think I ever got, heard an answer to the, the three, the three single, uh, site-built homes, whether they're gonna be on one acre, two acre, or how you propose to split this property. Uh, originally, didn't you say you were gonna split it to two acres? How, how would you split it to two acres?
Well, right now, we're trying to pull it out of industrial and make it an SR one, which is one acre minimum.
Okay, well, yeah, well, it was, okay, earlier on, it was mentioned that it was gonna be two acres, so I just wanted to clarify, it's gonna be SR one, okay?
It was in the wordage that I read at the start of the process.
But just recently, everybody was talking, a few people were talking about two acres, so I wanted to clarify it.
Yeah.
This young lady, I think, tried to clarify it also.
At this point, it's for SR one, one acre minimum.
Mr. Chairman, the confusion may be that the general plan says it's two acres or less.
Uh-huh.
So that may be the confusion.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, this parcel in particular is, is, uh, it, it's, it's in the industrial zone. What was, for decades, the industrial zone. If you look to the north, uh, well, to the west, go to the west, and that property is, parcel three zero six one seven one one zero C. There's a log cabin on that property, and I would say, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five years ago, that was industrial. That was owned, uh, by Mr. Hendricks in town here. And he sold it to a local residential person, and that person couldn't get a residential mortgage because it sat on commercial property, industrial. So, the town council, town, the town, the town of Chino Valley, rezoned it against my wishes, against Mr. Wells' wishes, and against Mr. Will, Jerry, Jay Wilmore, who I represented also at the time. Uh, so, that, that, um, we objected to it four or five years ago, we're gonna object to this rezone, and the parcel, uh, three zero six one seven one one zero E, which is the lower east side of this property, Mr. Wells was never notified that was being rezoned. We had no idea that, uh, a single-family residence was going in there, so we would've objected to that property also.
And this was when?
Uh, I believe it's the last year and a half or so.
Okay. So, it's been my experience that the town zoning commission, or zoning department is pretty diligent about posting the meetings and notifying the proper people?
And that speaks to another matter. Uh, Mr. Wells was notified early on by postcard that there was gonna be a, a meeting on the twenty-third of March, and his postcard said that it was gonna be on the site of the property, the, the subject property. Uh, subsequently, he was sent another postcard that didn't say that, and he said, it said it was gonna be at the town hall. But Mr. Wells isn't a proofreader. He, you know, I mean, and that, that post, the second postcard wasn't redlined, showing highlights, the changes, and so on and so forth. So Mr. Wells and I were there on the twenty-third at the site, we were anticipating the meeting there. You know, at least we, we got a letter in to you folks to let it, let you know that our objections were clear, and we wanna follow through on them. So, uh, further along the line, you won't be, you won't be able to see this, um,
Is this on another, is this on another piece of property?
No, it's, this is about the subject property.
Okay, cuz we're running short on time here.
Okay, but, Mr. Wells' property, uh, with industrial use, could have certain setbacks of five hundred feet from a residential property. That, uh, like I say, you can't see it, you're more than welcome to, if you'd like me to pass these around, you can see.
And what would the five hundred feet setbacks be in, in, what does that retain, pertain to?
Medical marijuana usage.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, so it's a five hundred foot setback from residential properties. So, again, you won't be able to see it from where you are, but I'm, I'm more than glad to pass these around if you'd like to see them. This is the area, conservatively, five hundred feet within the boundaries of the subject parcel. And that is twelve point four one acres, right now.
And this only affects just a marijuana facility, no other industrial stuff?
Well, there's all kind of industrial setbacks, yeah, but, yeah, not, not.
But the one you're talking about right now is only pertaining to the medical marijuana facility, and it doesn't have any other effect other than for the medical marijuana facility?
Five hundred feet, five hundred feet is, uh, the rule for a, a medical marijuana facility.
Correct.
Yeah, uh, what all the other setbacks are, whether you're doing toxic chemicals or something to that effect, or, uh, you know, uh, some kind of, uh, industrial manufacturing, I don't know all those setbacks off the top of my head. But they're gonna be great, they're gonna be greater from a residential property than they will be from an industrial property, that I can guarantee you. So, conservatively, if we just looked at the twelve point four one acres, Mr. Wells' property is now on the market for one point six million dollars. That's fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars an acre. Uh, the value of the property lost to Mr. Wells, conservatively.
Oh, excuse me, I understand where you're going with this, but that only pertains to a medical marijuana facility, lose no value for any other facility that would be put in there, is that correct?
Well, that's, no, that's not true, no, that's not true, that's not true. There are setbacks for all kind of industrial, uh, projects.
Right, alright, so I'm gonna give you one more minute to close up, okay?
Okay, so, uh, conservatively, the value of the property that Mr. Wells has at stake is six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And like I say, that doesn't even take into consideration that small triangular piece directly above Mr. Wells' property, which is also industrial, which would be totally wiped out. So, uh, Mr. Wells is at stake to lose a great deal of money.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about, you're talking about EAPN three oh six zero three zero zero two N?
Correct, that's, that's, that's the main parcel.
So what if you built on the north end of the property?
You, you could, you, yeah, you could, but what if somebody wanted to build on it all? One, one point six million dollars, I'd like to build on it all.
Okay, we're, thank you for your time.
Would you, would you like to see these?
We can pass it around if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, appreciate your time.
Can you tackle that? Anybody else like to come on, step up, please? Please state your name.
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, I'm Rachel Furno. And, um, I think my main concern about these particular issues is, number one, when someone buys a piece of land and it's information that I'm not sure, but if the applicant for this rezone bought this piece of property, and it was under the designation of industrial, I just don't understand why we are allowing people to make such leaps, it's like five degrees of separation to go from industrial to single-family one. And I don't also know why the commission gets to decide who, as a property owner, has more right or value to their land than another. So, Mr. Kurt Wells owns a property that's industrial, it's his property, he has the right to use it for whatever he wants under that designation. The applicant owns his property, which is zoned industrial, and he has the right to use that under any designation. To now say, I mean, there's already a buffering issue, clearly, that we have industrial right into residential zoning, which seems to be a pretty common thing that's happening, um, within our town plan, but now to say you're going to increase single-family one to push over to be right abrupt up to industrial, you have commercial-heavy down to the southeast, and where is the transitional zoning? I mean, it says right in our general plan, we're supposed to have transition zones and buffering. So, we're already looking at a faulty layout here. It's my understanding, because no other information has been furnished, that this applicant bought this land with this designation. Why do you get to say now he can change it and devalue another property owner's land? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what Andrew, uh, the town attorney advised, but it says very clearly in Proposition two oh seven, that if a municipality makes a land use change specifically to zoning that depreciates a current property owner's land, they have right to file suit against the town. And I know we've been there before, and I know we don't have a lot of money, so I would just beg the question, how many lawsuits can the town of Chino Valley afford because of these decisions? People have every right to do what they want with their own land within the designation. If this is a contractor who wants to build single-family homes, go find land that's already zoned that, thank you.
Thank you. We start the clock on this, please? Okay, anybody else wanna come up and speak? Oh. Okay, so I am going to close the public portion of this meeting. We don't need the clock, thank you. Okay, so, there's been some questions here, um, I'd like town staff to step up to the podium, or however you wanna deal with it. So there's been some statements and some questions about this, so maybe we can get some clarification?
Absolutely.
Can we start with the floodways, seeing as how that was the first?
Sure thing. His mouse is a little jumpy here. So what I have pulled up for you, Chair, um, and Commission, is the Yavapai County GIS interactive map. This parcel right here is the subject parcel, and question that we are here tonight to discuss the potential rezoning. In reference to the floodplain, specific floodway floodplain, there is a layer that we can turn on here that overlays a FEMA-designated floodway and a floodplain. The floodplain, or floodway is outlined in the dark blue, purple, um, and then the lighter color is the floodplain. In regards to that there, Mr. Wells' property to that western end is pretty heavily inundated within that FEMA-designated area, as you can see by this map.
So, question for you, this area where the arrow is at, is that the parcel that belongs to Mr. Wells?
That it is, yes, sir.
Would that designation prohibit constructing industrial complex on that?
So, I'm not the best person to answer that, Mr. Frank Marbury is the Public Works Director, and I believe he is in attendance via Zoom. See if we can get him on here. Maybe.
Can you hear me, Will?
Yes, we can, Frank.
Okay. As far as building in the floodplain or floodway, uh, there are rules, it's, it's not easy, uh, you get into federal issues, but you can build, it's easier to build in the floodplain than the floodway, but they're still difficult, and, uh, there's lots of hoops to jump through with engineering involved, so that you don't affect the flow or divert the flow, but, uh, it is, it is possible under certain circumstances to, uh, have some construction, uh, especially in the floodplain.
And to reiterate, Frank, the floodplain is the lighter shade, I don't know if you can see our screen or not right now.
Right, that's right. Typically, you don't build in the floodway, um, I think under extraordinary circumstances, you could do it, but you'd be hard-pressed for the federal government to allow that.
So, uh, Mr. Marbury, can you see the, you're looking at this, I'm assuming on the Zoom? It looks to me like most of this property is floodway.
True, but there are portions that are out, so I wouldn't want to prohibit anyone from building or developing on their property that they have a right to, as long as they follow the, the rules and regulations.
Right.
I, I would like to make one comment, okay, this is a comment about the handout we just received. Looking at it, and you know, I, I'm kind of trying to overlay it, it looks like most of the area of this twelve point one acres is in the floodway, which would make it unbuildable.
It would've been good to have this brought to us earlier, so we could put it up for everybody to look at. Can we, um, have town staff take a quick look at this, please?
So, Chair, what I've.
Unless you already have a copy of it.
What I've gone ahead and done, Chair, um, I've selected Mr. Zito's the subject property here, and I've gone ahead and put a five hundred-foot buffer, uh, which is exactly five hundred feet directly off of the Zito property, um, which, it will indicate the impacted area of Mr. Wells' adjacent parcel.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for now? Go ahead. Need to speak into the microphone, please.
The letter that you received, it says that this property is landlocked.
No, it's a different parcel.
That's, that's.
You're on the wrong page.
That's the second one.
That's the second one? Yeah, okay, sorry.
You're right.
I, I, I do have one question now. Was this, um, zoning request reviewed by the town attorney?
Uh, the issue regarding, um, the Wells' property was presented to the town attorney, and it was reviewed for that aspect.
Okay, cuz I, I noticed on the, uh, uh, on the staff research, on the zone change, it didn't list town attorney.
Okay.
So that's why I'm raising the question.
Sure, absolutely.
So the, the attorney looked at that and said that this is.
Correct, yeah, there was.
Not problematic for the town.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, there was some question about the fact that this has, that we don't have a buffer zone around this property be, uh, from industrial, but it looks to me like on two sides of this property, there's SR one or, or some sort of residential designation, so I'm not certain what the buffer would need to be, because there's residential stuff all the way around this thing, other than on the two sides. Pardon?
Residential next to industrial as it sits.
Right? In fact, there's a lot of it.
Yep.
Okay. Well, that was the questions that I wrote down. Mr. Zito, you have an opportunity to come up and have any additional time to respond to any of the comments or questions, would you like to do so?
First of all, if I put my finger in here, does it? Oh, I can get it right here, okay. Um, I'm wondering if also, if we're, if this property here is to be used for any type of, uh, industrial usage or whatever, if there's even enough room for setbacks off from the property to build in. To me, it looks like there's no room for setbacks anywhere. So I don't know why the property wouldn't be used to be built on anyways. Um, as far as our property here being built, we have, like you say, residential, there's people building homes right next door to us right now, uh, there is a large one right here, um, there's manufactured homes up and down here, just all types of stuff, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming over in this area, they're gonna wind up doing stuff over there, too.
Do you plan on doing an easement to gain access to the two northern parcels, once it, if it gets?
We plan on, uh.
Speaking of the mic there, please.
If you split it into, if you split it into three parcels, do you plan on putting an easement to gain access to the two rear parts?
Actually, three parcels, and yeah.
Yeah, so there'd be an easement to get to.
In fact, part of it's already done with the homeowners on the other side. Over.
Are there any plans to elevate any of this property?
To elevate them?
Yeah.
Per code, will be at least eighteen inches or, or twelve inches above the, uh, the road right there anyhow, yeah. And there's a natural drainage that obviously goes towards the wash anyhow, it's with the roads and everything up there.
Alright, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we closed the public portion of the meeting. So now we've heard all of the discussion and had questions answered, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I move to approve rezone ZC dash two zero two two dash zero two, as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditions of approval in attachment A.
And we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Right, I'd like to do a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paziac?
Yes.
Chairman Merritt?
Yes. Motion is carried unanimously. Alright, thank you. So we're gonna move forward to item D two, which is ZC twenty-two-two dash zero-three, this is a request by Thomas Langston for approval of a rezoning of approximately six point one-five acres from agricultural residential AR five to single-family residential, two acre minimum, SR two for property located at seventy, at seven thirty-five South Road One West, Chino Valley, parcel number is three zero six dash two nine dash zero five two A. Ethan?
Alright, thank you again, Chair.
Ethan, I'm sorry, I'm not sure which way to go with that.
Um, thank you again, Chair.
Um, thank you again, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Beth King, um, tonight, the item before you is a request for a rezon for a property on seven three five South Road One West. The applicant is in attendance tonight. The roughly six point one five acre subject property is located to located to the east of South Road One West. And to the north of the property is Northwest Veteran Veterinary. Currently, the subject property is being used as a residential property. Now, the request now, the request is to rezon the property from its current zoning of agricultural residential five acre minimum to single family residential two acre minimum. The property is adjacent to single family residential two acre minimum to the west with agricultural residential five acre minimum to the east. The rezon to single family residential two acre minimum will be in conformance with the general land use map, which designates this area for medium density residential two acres or less. Now, the town notified the surrounding neighbors of the neighborhood meeting, which was held on March twenty third. The applicant and four neighbors were in attendance and the following questions on the slide were asked by the neighbors. In addition to the neighborhood meeting, staff also received two emails and one letter in opposition to the rezon. Now, with that, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for the rezoning of approximately six point one five acres from agricultural residential five acre minimum to single family residential two acre minimum for property located at seven three five South Road One West, Chino Valley, with conditions of approval, which can be found in attachment A. At this time, I'll open the floor for questions or discussion.
I I have two questions.
Ready?
Was this zoning rezoned reviewed by the town attorney?
No, it was not.
It wasn't? And second question, the comment about it being landlocked, has anyone reviewed to see if it is in fact landlocked?
So I will try my best to answer this question and maybe our senior planner might jump on if if he has anything else to add. But as you can see from this aerial, the subject property does have an easement located to the south part of the property. And so it is considered that it has an easement and therefore it is not landlocked.
Thank you.
That is a road easement, correct? Must be, or they wouldn't be able to use it.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this point? Let's why we have the owner talk to us about that. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, so now is an opportunity for the applicant to come up and let us know what you're planning on doing.
I'm Tom Langston, and this is the property. At present time, I have no plans on developing that, but I want to have it zoned. So if in the future it becomes practical or necessary to divide that, it's own to do so.
Okay, do you live on this property?
I do.
Okay. So right now, you're just looking to plan ahead for the future and the possibility you may need to sell off some of it to
Correct.
Get by. Okay, anybody have questions?
You also would have to provide an easement to gain access
I understand that.
Gary?
No, it's
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open up the portion of this meeting. Please put the clock up. Anybody would like to come up from the public and speak on this particular item on the agenda? That would be great. Please help yourself. Come up to microphone, state your name. Anybody like to come up?
Zoom in on that map at all?
Julie Tarplin.
Thank you.
My piece of property.
Yeah, perfect.
Is with the house showing on it. It's to the east.
That one there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have a easement road that comes from Road One.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
We have a road that is not maintained by the city. It is rock road from Road One all the way to the subject property to the bottom. That road has been used for the past twenty seven years for the property on this side of the road. I do understand that the owner has access to his property, just to his driveway. And that's coming from Road One West. So I would like to know how, when he has subdivided or changed to single two, how he's going to get access to that property.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, we bought twenty seven years ago into a town of Chino that was really looking out to rural living. And now, in the last five years, Chino Valley Town is looking at residential. We're on five acres agriculture, as well as the property above, the property across. Matter of fact, it's a forty acre parcel that we have restrictions to two acre minimums. So if we don't have two acre minimums on our acreage, it's not to happen. But what I'm getting tonight from the previous one and now, it's nothing for you guys to come along and say, we can go residential. Another problem I see is water. We're all on wells. What's the subject property going to do? Are they putting in a well for their next two partials? I think the saddest part is the fact that agriculture, which is what Chino Valley originally was, is going bye bye. We were in a Chino Valley district, water district, and we fought it. And a lot of California people that had bought in here didn't care about water. And the city sold that water to Prescott. And so here we are. We're starting to have water issues. And now we're talking about cutting property more. I don't, I'm sorry, guys. I don't understand it. The lady that spoke before, she obviously has been in this for years to try to keep Chino Valley a rural area. And she's having a hard time with it.
Ma'am, could you wrap it up, please? Your time is up.
I have five acres and just to give you a quick summation, three years ago, I asked to get two acres cut off of mine. Absolutely not. Twenty fifteen, we stopped all of that. And now I have a new neighbor who didn't really check that he could or couldn't. And he's going, hey, guys, I would like to do this in the future, maybe.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dan Main, this is Bob Davis' old farm. So you guys know, Bob Davis used to be on the commission. So all this land around here that she's living on and everyone else in that whole area is living on was Bob's farm. So it's going to split. We know that. This is the nature of what you guys do for a living here, what in your meetings.
I'm going to stop you right there. I would love to make a living out of this, but buddy, I'm sitting here on my own dime.
Zero, eight eight years, zero, first things like you did. This notice files, if you do this rezon, it meets the CCNR, so it's compatible with what the other neighbors have on there's the deed restrictions. You've got this guy giving public notice essentially to all those other neighbors that this is going to eventually have probably houses on it. So I think it's a good plan to do this and then he's doing it well in advance, so there's no, you know, he has time, you can talk about it. And not this rush deal where someone wants to build a house in there. He's going to have to figure out the access between him and Will as to how it's going to come in, but I I suspect that her driveway is for her and her neighbors and he can't use it no matter what because it's probably not deed it that way to them. So I don't know, I'm in favor of it because I think it's good planning. It gets the notice out now that it will eventually be three parcels and everyone's going to know it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Ma'am, you only get one shot, I'm sorry. Ma'am? Ma'am? I'm sorry. If you come up to the podium, you can have at it.
I'm Julian Baker. And to make the comment that I think you wanted to make about the notification process of all of this. I have spent thousands of dollars of my own money to notify people in my community about what was going on. If you looked at the last parcel and this parcel, there's only a certain, I mean, how many part, how many landowners are actually within three hundred feet of that? I mean, the community doesn't even know this is happening because we're not notifying. I don't know what paper it's going in, but it's not going in a paper that is notifying the community. And that's pretty much, pretty much what I have to say about it. I mean, the notification process, we need to work on.
Thank you. Anybody else? You get two turns because it's a different subject.
Hey, I'm I'm got three coming.
Start that clock.
I actually just have a question for Vice Chair Passiak. Why?
He won't be able to answer you right now.
Okay, I'm just curious why you asked if this project, we had consulted, the town had consulted with the town attorney. I'm not sure if that's because you feel they should be consulting on every matter or only the ones where people submit a threat of litigation ahead of time.
Nope. Got to behave yourself. All right, anybody else want to come up and speak? Sir, different subject. Have at it. You can speak on the next deal we got coming.
There was a comment made earlier. I am a local builder and I've been here for about forty eight years. And I've seen this town go from a Bob Davis farm to from just simple chicken farms and stuff around here to what we're having today. Chino Valley is a beautiful place to live. There's a lot of people that would like to come and live here and we're not going to be able to do anything other than maybe do the one acre minimums and subdivisions and stuff like that. I understand that, but it also you have to, you can't just move in and be here for twenty years and then shut the gate behind you. That's just not going to happen. It's not right for other people to do that anyhow. If you do look at some of this other property over here, though, there's, this still works, right? You've got other properties right in here that are going to be done. They're going to, I think, what's his name? Nenke is doing some properties right here where he's going to split them. There's more down here that are going to get split. And they've already split stuff over on this side over here and mobile homes up on this side over here. You know, I I just don't see where we're going to be able to stop a lot of this. The best thing that we can do is help control it and keep it looking good. This, the fellow in here that's wanting to split this, a comment was made earlier, it's his property. There's no reason why he shouldn't be able to do that if he's in compliance with everything around it, which he really is. Now, if the lady over here wants to split her property now, where it didn't happen before, she's probably pretty welcome to go ahead and do it. In fact, she ought to be up here with this fella right now trying to do it. Anyways, I'm just saying that there's a lot of different ideas up here that Chino Valley has and we're going to have a lot more. People ought to get used to trying to do it and just making sure that everybody is in compliance and that it keeps up the value of Chino Valley. Because we got a lot more coming in, the backside of us and everything else over there. There's ten thousand more homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing as how nobody's going to volunteer to come up, we're going to close the public comments. So who wants to come up from the staff and answer questions? All right, so I have a few and then anybody else wants to chime in. One of the questions was access. I know that this, at this point in time, it's not really under our purview for access issues until they do some more development work with it. Am I correct there?
Um, correct. So we we found that there was an easement from the property owner's deed. It was recorded in their record or survey. Right now, if they wanted to split the property in the future, they would have to access that resulting lot from the southern property. But they could access it from the easement to the east, but it would have to be in agreement with either of the adjacent property owners.
Okay. There was a comment that basically said, we can set up here and do what we want, any way we want. Maybe somebody could clarify that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, you can't sit up there and do anything you want. You are restricted
Probably good.
By the general plan and the zoning code. So if you have zoning on a property, that is your entitlement. You are also entitled to whatever the general plan says your property could zone to. And the cases that we are looking at, both of these cases are consistent with what the general plan says they can zone to. Those are two ways that they have rights on their property. If they were inconsistent, we would bring that up to you. We probably wouldn't even get the case to you because we wouldn't allow that to happen. They would have to change the general plan first. And that's a huge effort and it takes a lot longer time and it's more expensive. And it's harder to do.
That's a correct statement because I voted on it. So another question is water, which we hear quite frequently. The zoning commission has absolutely zero authority over any water issues.
Correct.
That's just the way it is. The other thing is the town started out as an agricultural community. When I drove through this town in nineteen seventy nine, there was green hayfields all over the place and farms. And then the state of Arizona decided that it was going to cost a lot of money to pump and work with that water. And so farming became pretty much a non-viable operation. Otherwise, they would still be doing it because this town was full of farms. So what do you do with those large pieces of property? Another comment was, one of the property owners was turned down for a lot split two or three years ago. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I can speak on that a little bit, Chair. I have spoken with this property owner a couple of times throughout the public process and have invited her to come back in to retalk about what she wants to do. Her property right now is currently zoned AR five. So and she's at five acres, so she would have to go through a similar process that Mr. Langston is going through tonight. She's more than welcome and still more than welcome to come by and talk with us again.
Okay, thank you. There was another comment about the notification process, which we've been through this several times. Please educate everybody again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The notification process is set out by state law and it only requires one form of notification and they list three or four, and we actually do five. The idea of the three hundred feet is to notify those property owners directly impacted by whatever the action is going to be. It's not anybody who lives close by. It's not It's not anybody who lives close by, it's not anybody who might drive by and look at it, it's people whose property is directly impacted. That's who gets the 300-foot notice. We also do an ad in the newspaper, we also put-
Could you please state which newspaper?
Excuse me, it isn't within the Daily Courier Legal sections, the Chino Valley Review only runs once a week, um, on Wednesdays.
So that really wouldn't meet the criteria for the notification process.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Um, we, we do the, so we do the postcards, we do the posting of the site, we put a legal ad in the newspaper. We have it on our website, and we post at the post office, and the library gets a full packet.
How much in advance is it on the website?
Well, the same time you get your packets, that goes on the website.
14 days.
Yes.
All right.
And remember, state law says you could, you only have to do one, and we do all of those.
All right. Thank you. Anybody got questions?
No, just a comment, though, about the water situation, so our hands are tied. ADWR is in charge of water. Unfortunately, I don't agree with that, but it is a fact, so please can get, get involved with ADWR and Citizens Water Advocacy Group. And maybe we can change some of these things, but us as a commission don't have a say in it, so.
We have no, other than all of us drinking it and pumping it out of the ground like everybody else.
And ag, for the most part, uses a lot more water than residential generally.
My question, how much do we have? What is too much? Yeah, I see it going down, been here for 12 years, I've been here, but how, what's our limit? Do we know what our limit is?
I don't know, crap shoot that nobody's willing to drive a stake.
It's definitely an issue, but unfortunately, we don't have a say in it.
Yeah, a lot of us would. Okay, so, thank you, Nathan. Any other questions? Okay, so now it's an opportunity for the applicant to respond to the public comments, would you like to come up and do so? You don't have to. Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this item. So, um, we've had discussion and questions answered, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve rezone Zebra Charlie 202203 as presented, subject to their staff report and information provided during this hearing, and the conditions of approval and attachment A.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
No.
Commissioner Zamudia?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. Now, as tradition requires, we'd like for Mr. Som, Commissioner Somerville to explain his no vote, so the town council knows what he's thinking.
All right. Number one is the water issue, I know we had discussed that, but, um, I don't know what we're gonna do with the water, and since we have no control over it, and if you're gonna build, uh, extra houses, or planning on building extra houses, you're gonna have to deal with the water issue. So that's, that's why I oppose it also, I live along that road, and it's a terrible road. Uh, once we get more houses in there, not that we're gonna get them right away, um, it's gonna cause more problems with it, with that horrible road. And I know that's one of your issues as well, uh, Chairman, about the roads in this town. If we get more people voting, um, for the raising of the taxes to fix the roads, I'd be very happy to approve, uh, more parcels to be developed. But since we have what we have, I think, uh, that's one of the reasons why I oppose any more development. Get me better roads, and I'll say, yes, you can develop as much as you want, but the roads are terrible. Get me more water, yeah, you can have as many people as you want to move in here, but it's, those are both issues that I, uh, that I think are very serious issues that we need to consider.
Thank you. I'm just gonna take a brief moment here to make a couple of comments. As property owners, we all have desires for our properties, things we'd like to do, maybe make some money on it if we're an investor, or somebody who needs to sell something in order to continue living. So... The questions of water, and roads, and grocery stores, and other amenities that the people in this town are asking for and requiring, and always bringing up in the zoning meetings time after time after time, until the town gains enough revenue through whatever source is possible for the town, these things are not gonna happen, and to stop the town from doing anything means that it'll cease to exist. I'm not interested in turning this place into a Prescott Valley, or a Phoenix, or anything like that, but I do believe that in this particular instance, because there is surrounding, basically, on three sides of this property, if you count the corner, if you count it as four sides, that are designated SR2 or SR1, I don't think this is a huge leap of, uh, indiscretion on the zoning commission's part. The access would have to be worked out, and before it could be done anything with, it's gonna come back to us anyways. So, that's just my comment. I'm, I'm... I just feel that we, um, until we're all ready to step up to the plate and contribute enough money to have what, what everybody asks for here, then that's, this is what's gonna be happening agriculture in this town, unless it's some sort of a marijuana facility, doesn't seem to be extraordinarily viable, otherwise it would still be here. And what are you gonna do with all these large tracts of lands? Look at it? If that's the case, then you should buy it and own it. All right, that's just my little shot in the, across the bow here. We're gonna move to item E1, which is another action item. TA 2022-07. This is about guest houses, and we're looking forward to the staff, staff presentation. Who's the lucky person?
I am.
All right.
And I have a couple of binders, that's why I'm not gonna stand up there, because there's not space for my binders up on the podium. So this is a-
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I know that we've moved on to a different item, but Gary just brought something up, and I apologize for not taking care of this while we were on that item. He wants to answer the question about why he was asking about the town attorney. Is it possible, can we do that now, or can we do that later?
We can do it later.
Okay, let's do it after, Gary, let's do it in the, in the information items. Thank you for reminding me. Okay.
Thank you. Um, so back in August, um, staff, planning staff went before the council in a work session, and we brought a handful of items to them. One is we chatted about cargo containers, one was we chatted about the 0.16 zoning, and one was guest houses. Now, we currently allow guest houses. So this is not allowing anything that we don't already have, except currently, our zoning says that you can't rent your guest house. I, probably everyone in this room knows someone who's renting their guest house, I'm, I'm just saying. So, staff did some research to, with a number of other communities, and looked at how they handled their guest houses. And a number of them do rent their guest houses out. And so, staff thought this might be an opportunity for this community, for either elderly people that are on a larger piece of land, and remember, you have to have one acre minimum in order to have a guest house. Currently, the only restriction, restriction is it can't be an RV. So, staff's proposal for consideration is that we allow the guest houses to be rented out, but we require the property owner to live on the site. What that does is that helps control any issues with a renter. If you have two renters on the site and the landlord isn't there, you have, um, you have an absentee landlord issue, I don't, probably some of you have dealt with that before in, in your lives. It's really a challenging situation, and it, it, in my opinion, diminishes property values around it, because you as the property owner who lives next door to something like that, you can't get a hold of the property owner, you can't solve issues. So, if the property owner lives on the site in one of those units, and they're managing whoever's renting their, the guest house, then you have a way to contact the property owner to solve issues, and chances are, if you're living next to someone who's causing you an issue, you're gonna stop that issue, if it's on your property with you. So we were looking at that, uh, this situation for a number of reasons, because there, there is a housing shortage, I guess we could call it a shortage, it's challenging to find places. There are a number of families, uh, older parents that we have talked to, that their, uh, adult children can't come back to Chino Valley, there's no place for them to be. Um, some people are older, and maybe they don't wanna maintain the whole property, maybe they need a little more income, maybe it would be nice to have someone else on the site who kind of watches over them. It could be family, it could be somebody else. And so the idea was, well, you could invite your adult children to come back, pay rent, they have their own place, they do their own thing, and, and they watch the parents, that, that's a scenario. It could also be that it's just, you hire it out to a teacher or a police officer who wants to work for the school district here, or the town police department, and can't find a place. So, so it was just a concept that we wanted to present as an option for housing. It also upgrades the type of housing that would be required for a guest house. Uh, we are requiring in this code that it would be stick-built, uh, which is, which is very, is different than the current code, the current code says anything but an RV. So it's kind of an upgrade to that. The way that we would manage this is that if you are going to rent out a guest house, that you have to sign an affidavit. We record it against the property, and so when you sell your property, the next person who does their title search, this comes up, so they understand that if they're going to rent out that guest house, that they are required to live on site. And so that stays with the property. So that is the staff's proposal, and we are open to dialogue, suggestions, and, um, recommendations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have questions for Ms. Lineberry?
What would happen to the existing illegal rentals that are not stick-built?
Well, it would be great if they could come in conformance with this. Though, one of the things that we could do is draw the line in the sand with the date, if this gets adopted, and say those prior to that, if they meet everything except the type of unit, because I think that would probably be the biggest issue, trying to swap out, um, a manufactured home for a stick-built, um, and that they would be grandfathered with that provision.
Code enforcement's gonna enforce this?
Yes.
But they're not enforcing illegal renting now?
We have to have a complaint. We're, we're not the rental Nazis, so we're not gonna go knocking on everybody's door and ask people if they're paying rent. This is a way that we can register where they are currently, um, in the last six years, we have 24, I believe is the number that DeeDee found for me, let me look. 24 guest homes since 2014.
Built.
Built. Or moved on site, existing, that got permits.
I think we discussed this before, didn't we, at the session about the RV, uh, the RV and Bs and all that stuff?
Yeah, the state exempted us from being able to have any control on that.
Any other questions?
I, I just have one comment. Part of the analysis says that the town will record the acknowledgement as to reflect in a title search when the property changes hands, so the fee for that recordation will be paid for by the owner for the property?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the fee got included.
I think that's $12 or-
I know with, uh, records of surveys and maps, they're $24 for the first, and then 20 every subsequent, for eight and a half by 11, I, I think we're talking under $10 a page.
And so in this scenario of owners living in either building, they wanna rent now and move off property, they would have to remove the renters. And only one renter could rent the whole-
Correct.
Both buildings.
Correct. Because then it converts to the prior, you know, the prior definition of a guest house. If you don't meet this criteria, then you're not a guest house.
And that's gonna show up, well, that really wouldn't show up in any lien or anything, if somebody did that, it wouldn't show up anywhere. We'd have to get a complaint.
Right.
It sounds to me like, while it's not perfect by any way, shape, or form, it's the best attempt to bring into focus and under control, uh, an issue of illegal renting. And it also gives you a bit of a lever now, because of this being enacted, that get, if there is a complaint, then there is definite rules that can be implemented and fines to be paid and that sort of business.
That would be helpful.
Okay, because it is, it's going on, I mean, it is going on, that's just the way it is.
Does town get any, uh, since it's illegal to do that now, do they get complaints?
If we get a complaint, we, we can, it's really hard to prove that someone has paid someone else rent.
And in addition to that, um, state definition, or even federal definition of what a family member is, is very blurry. Um, it's no longer blood, it, it is very wide and stretching, so for code enforcement to be able to make that claim against somebody is almost impossible.
Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to open it for the public comment?
Um, it says right here, there is no public comment. Which I can certainly be happy to do that, but-
Yeah, it needs to be public.
Okay. You guys made a mistake, hell, heavens to-
DeeDee's gonna own that one.
Now that I've been corrected, I would like to open up this portion of the meeting for public comment on this item only, please start the clock.
My name is Donna Armstrong, I'm a Chino Valley resident, and I basically am against this. We have so many homes here that are already mobile homes, so now to put a second home on there, I, they get to live better than I do? I mean, I think there are, I think, I don't see why it couldn't be opened up to small open, mobile homes at the same time. That would be my only request.
Thank you, anybody else? Please state your name.
Dan Main. Great work, by the way. This is a historic problem, I mean, historic for decades before I even got involved. You've cleaned up a lot of the issues, so I think you did a great job. Anyway, um, just a side comment, impact fees used to be, when I was mayor, we put in impact fees in for roads, until you built your library, that could be your solution for your roads. Thank you.
You bet. Yes, ma'am.
Julian Baker, um, I, I have some questions here, so I'm trying to understand, I have a modular mobile home, and it's on two acres. And let's say I wanna build a stick-built house and rent it out. Well, if I leave, then in order to rent my house out, I have to remove the mobile home I live in right now?
No.
You see what I'm saying?
We do, we'll answer that question when we get to the thing, any other things?
No, that's it, that was, that was it.
Anybody else?
My name's Mary Seal, and I'm a resident of Chino Valley, mainly, I just had a question, which kind of goes along with those two things, um, or those two people who spoke. I understand this stick-built, but I also am wondering why we couldn't do like a, uh, like a, uh, modular home? Um, whether it'd be like built after the year 20, you know, 2020, or, so it's a nice one, because I, I don't think you wanna just- So it's a nice one, because I, I don't think you want to just run a mobile home in there and then, you know, you're wanting, you're going to get the same thing you have now. But there are a lot of modular homes that somebody might be able to afford, whereas they cannot afford a stick-built home. And that's kind of really, I just had a question, why we couldn't entertain that as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting. We have questions. Who wants to answer them?
Go ahead and start.
All right. So two comments on manufactured homes as opposed to site-built homes.
Correct. So the reason that staff is proposing stick-built is because of all of the other jurisdictions that we looked at didn't require, didn't allow manufactured RV, park model, any of those. It had, they all had to be stick-built. And so it's just a proposal. It could, it could be changed to add manufactured homes as an option with the stick-built.
Okay, and then the question about the lady having to move her residence if she moved, moved out? I think there's a misunderstanding there.
Right, so, so this is allowing you, when you live on your property, to rent a second unit. So if you move off, if you're not selling it to someone else, you can't, you can't, under this code with this guest house, you can't rent two units on one piece of land in a single-family zone.
So you'd have to have one renter move out and then rent the whole property to one person?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so I hear some comments out there. It's not being controlled right now anyways. And this is our attempt to bring it into enforcement as best as we can. At least with this, at least with this zoning designation about, or about this UDO revision, that gives us a weapon to at least start trying to bring it under control. And I understand that it's not perfect by any way, shape or form. And you're certainly able to go to the town council and update it because we just closed the public portion of the meeting. I don't make the rules, I just try to get by with them. And I sort of broke a rule there to even comment on it, but that's okay. So you want to add to my comment on that?
I mean, the, the option is leave things the way they are and we know how they're running now. Or we could put something in place that could have some teeth and some restrictions and hopefully protect neighboring private property from hat, from being infringed upon by renters who, quite frankly, aren't supposed to be there right now. And that there's no control over.
I would like to see and make our recommendation that manufactured homes would be allowed as long as they're on a permanent foundation and maybe have some architectural to match the existing home. So it doesn't look like a, because a stick-built's mostly going to match the existing.
Okay.
So maybe manufactured homes and stick-built homes should have a prerequisite that they have to be in conformity with the existing home.
And I did find that in all the other ordinances talked about design.
Permanent foundation.
A permanent foundation and design standards between the two units.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'd like to add that.
I could just make a comment here, too. There was brought up by a member of the public, making it a new manufactured home. Is that something that you would, okay?
Yeah.
Well, they can only do certain years back anyways, and they won't let you do it. But it needs to be, it needs to be a new or within a very short time of the date of installation. I don't know what would be an appropriate year. Maybe the billing department could help with that.
Well, I don't think we want to go back to seventy-six.
No.
No, I don't either. I, you know, I'm not a mobile home expert at all as far as dates are concerned. But, you know, anything that's over five, ten years old is going to have some wear and tear on it. And, you know, we want to move things, we want to create something where things are moved in that are decent and solid and, and not creating another problem.
I would think if you don't state that they need to be new.
Okay, and I'm good with that, totally. I think that's a good recommendation. On a permanent foundation.
Got it.
Okay, Gary, you have a comment?
Okay, so the comment is, do we need to change that wordage? Or can we do it as the part of the motion?
You can do it as part of the motion?
Is that, I mean, we were pretty clear about that, I think.
That was crystal clear.
Okay, do you have any objection to that, Gary? Anybody else? Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve text amendment T-202207 as reflected in attachment A. Subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and also on item additional requirements, item E, that manufactured homes would be allowed as long as they are new and built on a permanent foundation with same architectural features as the existing home.
Great, we'll also change that in the definition. We'll revise the definition to include that.
Okay. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yes.
Commissioner Zmuda?
Yes.
I'll get your name right one of these times. Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move to the information items portion of the meeting. And I'm going to step in. I guess we have item F2, never mind. Okay, staff, you got some stuff for us?
In regards to the previous council actions of prior P and last month's P and Z items, we only had one, it was the replat of tract B within the Chino Meadows Unit Two subdivision that was approved by town council.
Oh, good deal. And there was something about the discussion of the June meeting work session? Is that a date we're trying to set?
So currently, at this point in time, we have no submitted cases, zoning cases for the June cycle. We would like to just bring it up to the commission if they would like to either, one, take that time off or if they would like to schedule a work session to work through some other upcoming text amendments or do a review of code like we did that one time or whatever.
Training.
What's that?
Training.
Training. There we go.
Okay, so I guess we can go down the line here just to make it uniform. What, what's your thought on having a, our zoning meeting and turning it into a training session? Commissioner Switzer?
Yeah, I think it's, our staff has something for us.
Gary?
I agree for a work session.
Training session, yes.
Yep, okay, Bill. All right, I agreed also, so let's just set that up as a training session and, and also we can work on some of the other things that we had discussion about in the other meeting. I'm sure you've worked on some of those already.
Yes, yes, we have. We also have another item. At the last council meeting, the clerk had updates to the UDO. And DeeDee, our, our process coordinator, was checking with each of you. I think that it's been a struggle for us on staff to keep our books up to date. I'm sure that probably some of you have struggled with that. So she cleaned up a book, she made copies. So each of you has a new UDO book that is current and up to date. We're going to hand those out to you tonight. And whatever else you have?
Pitch it away.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, that's a big help.
Great. We've also got in there a, an annexation map, so you can see what, what the original township was when we've annexed things. We have the roadmap that was presented at the council meeting that talks about designations of roads and whether there'll be sidewalks or trails on the side. What else do we have in there, DeeDee?
The planning schedule.
Oh yeah, the planning schedule for staff, when a case comes in and the steps that we go through. And when it comes to each of you as a, as a board, we have something else. I know we do.
I know we do.
Well, it sounds like you guys did a lot of work, we appreciate that.
DeeDee worked hard on that for you.
Thank you. Okay, so was that it?
That's it for staff.
All right, so we're going to move forward to F2 commission. And now Gary can tell us why he asked the question about the attorney.
Okay. I asked the, I asked the question about the attorney for a number of reasons. One, I feel that it's prudent that the attorney review potential conflicts for any case. I asked it on both of the zoning cases that we had today. And two, the person who did send in that email about the first zoning case made it very clear that he was probably going to recommend to his client to talk to an attorney and look at litigation with the town or against the town. So I thought it was only prudent to, to ask that question.
All right, does any of the other commissioners have any comments or anything they'd like to say? So I'd like to thank the public for being here tonight and speaking your piece. Whether you agreed with what happened or not, this is how it works. The town's always looking for volunteers, so if you feel like you want to have a voice bigger than just a one-person voice, you're certainly welcome to go to the town and volunteer for all kinds of positions, which is what we foolishly did. Okay, so item F3 is public and I think this is the old deal where if you have anything to talk about that is not on this agenda, you have three minutes to speak. And you can talk about anything you want. We can't answer you, but we will certainly listen and maybe direct you towards somebody that could answer your question. Would anybody like to step up and speak? Please come up and state your name.
Julian Baker, and I wanted to speak specifically with what Ms. Lineberry had mentioned about the guest house and providing affordable housing for this community. Unfortunately, it does need to happen. We do need to provide affordable housing for this community because there are people that are working in this community that can't afford to live here. They work at Safeway, they have kids, and they can't afford to spend eighteen hundred dollars on an apartment at the, the apartment house on the entrance of town. There's not even any apartments to get. So I commend Lori for coming up with this plan because we need affordable housing and it needs to be provided to the people in this community. And RV parks are not an acceptable way to live. I mean, that is not an acceptable form of community housing. So I think this is a fantastic idea. Thank you for working on it. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, I just want to make an announcement. Rachel Furno. You're going to know it, I'm not even going to have to say it. Well, some of you might recognize me from our past meetings and a really organic...
We have your picture right here that says warning on it.
Do you keep it in your wallet? We have an organic alliance committee that's grown from that issue. We're building, every day we're about four hundred members strong right now at the community. It's called Chino Alliance for Responsible Growth and Development. We'll be having our first community event on May twenty-second at the Granite Creek Vineyard. I just want to extend an invite to any members of staff or the commission. It's going to be a great opportunity to come out, have some family fun. We're going to have bouncy house, live entertainment, barbecue. And it'll be a great time to just interact with a lot of community members. Our council candidates will be in attendance so that they can be speaking openly with the public about issues that concern them. So just want to make sure you guys pin it on your calendar and know that you're welcome and we'd love to have you there. At the Granite Creek Vineyard. Yeah.
At what time?
It's twelve to four on Sunday, May twenty-second. Didn't I say May?
Mm-hmm, yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree with the ladies a hundred percent. Dan Main, I apologize. I got real ticked off a couple of months ago when I'm driving through Molly Ray and I'm, then I immediately went over to Bright Star and these nice, beautiful one-acre parcels. But the backyards are nothing but growing weeds or at least they spray them or whatever. But the housing here is really in trouble because I commend you guys for getting your, both of you, for a quarter acre and half acre lots because other than that, it's eighty-five thousand, nine, ninety-five thousand for a one-acre lot these days. And so you just priced the normal family out of the thing. We have Chino Meadows that John, you know, no one likes and it's historic. It's been here since the sixties and same with Paul. And that's the only place our kids are living these days. Unless your parents have a lot of money, that's where they're all living. So I think the ladies are totally correct that that needs to be worked on. Nothing you can do, it's not, you write your own check and make it happen. The town has no legal authority to go and start building housing unless they get some grants. But that has to be top of mind, I think, right now because we're really getting this position where twenty-six hundred square foot house over here in Molly Ray, you're talking seven to eight hundred thousand dollars. And that just prices everyone, including, I think, everyone that's room, out of the market. That was it. And then one little quick thing. We used to have impact fees before the last crash. That's how we built the library, the new expansion of the library and a few other things. So water, Mark would love to have more money to buy water rights. So, and roads, you could solve that with just a council passing an impact fee. And then all new growth is going to be paying for itself. That was it, thank you.
Thank you. Quit that applause, we've had this discussion. I have a family member that can't, that's grew up here, born at the hospital in Prescott, has five kids, can't find a place to rent. He's staying in a park model mobile home in an RV, not on my property, but that's where he's living. And so I completely understand and I'm, I build houses for a living and I know the expenses involved with them. It's, it's just a very difficult thing. And anything such as what Ms. Lineberry worked up to give us a lever to work against that, I think is awesome. Anybody's got any other ideas? I'm sure she would love to hear them. So, thank you. Anybody else?
Is there any, is there any kind of provisions for hood housing, lower, low-income housing to be built in Chino Valley?
That's a good question.
We'll research that and get back to you.
Next week?
No, at our next, at our work session.
At the work session, there we go.
The other thing is, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to have dialogue with Mark, our water expert, we could have him at that June meeting. He can help you understand the basics of water.
That would be good. I would like to limit that time, though.
You know Mark.
No, I just, no, it's a good thing to limit the time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, I'd make a, entertain a motion, do adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you all. Thank you for being polite.
Good plan.